Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Trulson.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
And Mayor Coons.
Here.
We have all seven in the council mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and we do have some changes to the agenda. Item 2.2.3.2 and 2.3.2.2.2.3.5 and item 3.4.5 and 3.4.6, which our resolutions have been pulled for tonight. So that would be the changes to this agenda. Anyone wish to approve the agenda with those changes?
Motion, we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. And I'm going to digress a little bit. I do want to thank council member Greg Schultz for taking over for me last meeting when I was sick, and it sounds like you did a very good job. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is a presentation, and we'll turn this over to the chief and Dee.
Yes. We have Scott McGonaghy from Towards Zero Death, and Sergeant Dee Von Wald, who wants to present an award to Sergeant Von Wald, who heads up our Towards Zero Death campaign efforts. Scott was in public safety with the Minnesota State Patrol for years. He just couldn't get away from it, so now he's back with the TZD campaign efforts, and he'd like to present an award.
Well, thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for allowing me this precious time. I just appreciate, I get to speak at many city councils and county boards, but it's just neat to see we started with Almighty's direction before we started, so thank you for that. But I'm going to talk about something that's kind of emotionally charged and kind of tough to deal with sometimes, traffic enforcement. And sometimes, let's put it this way, say you were coming to the meeting today, maybe you were just a little late, and you were kind of pushing a little, and you looked in your rearview mirror, and there were the lights, so maybe, and you got one of those little pieces of paper, and so maybe traffic enforcement isn't high on your list at this moment. Or maybe you were coming here, and you had that four-way stop sign where you took off, and this guy came through, about took your front end of your car off, and wouldn't you know that was the one time the cop was there and stopped him, and you were going, yes. So it's hard to say what side of this, the aisle you're on in this one, but I now work for the Office of Traffic Safety. I've worked with all law enforcement in southern Minnesota, called the Southern Minnesota Law Enforcement Liaison. It was so much easier before when they just called me LT, but in fact, it's interesting. One of my sergeants, his mother, his wife's grandmother grew up here, so this is my first time. It's interesting. I also get an opportunity to talk to kids through my career and into this job now, and I always like to know where they're at, and I ask them some questions, and they're tough questions, and they deal with matters of life and death, and sometime I strike some nerves, and I see tears, but I say, how many know somebody that was maybe killed in a school shooting, or maybe a drug-related incident, or a drive-by shooting? I'll go through a number of various types of crimes where people lose their lives, and then, I have seen those hands, and then I say, how many personally know somebody that was killed in a car crash? Without exception, every time, it's one-third and one-half of the kids raise their hand. So that's why traffic enforcement is important to me. We get in our cars, and that's how we live, but unfortunately, all too often, that's how we die. So when we look at how we're doing in that area, 2011 was the lowest death rate we've had in Minnesota since 1944. We had 368 deaths, and that was good news, unless you happen to know somebody that was on that list. And then, it wasn't so good news, and everything changes. That's why you've probably heard of the program Safe and Sober, well, we now call it Towards Zero Death, and they decided they're going to set a goal, and what should it be? Well, when you think of that perspective, if you know somebody on the list, there's no acceptable answer other than, we're going to move towards zero death. And we're all government officials here. You took a contract and an oath to be here, and so did the law enforcement officers, and they stood up before a group like this and said, I will. And part of that is to say, I will protect the public. And when we look at how the public's dying, traffic safety has a big, has to be a big part of our commitment to protect the public. So how are we doing that? We're trying to take those people that take that commitment seriously and bring them together for what we call enforcement waves. We'll have a wave where we work on, say, seatbelts, and then another one where we work on speed. DWI, we do it all together at the same time to raise awareness, so everybody's thinking about it, and we don't do it alone. We find it's much more better when we join the community. We go through the four Es. We have education, we have engineering, we have emergency response, and enforcement. So what we do is to get together, and Owatonna has demonstrated they're a big player in that program of getting together, joining with cops all across the state, but joining with community members, and through media, try to really get the message, traffic safety is important. And they might go out and write a few tickets, too. And that's where it kind of be, you know, sometimes you get the perspective, that's cruel, that's mean. But so often, our folks see the outcome of when we don't do something about it. And so that is normally from a gut feeling, saying, I don't want to be cruel, I don't want to be mean, but I want to do my part to protect lives, and tickets and arrests are just one of the tools we use to do that. So why are we here today? I'm fortunate to, after each one of those enforcement waves, to select an agency, and just a handful across Minnesota, that we can say, hey, you're a shining star, and we appreciate what you're doing, and we want to recognize you, be in front of the people that hire them, and the community. And we could have done it with a plaque, could have done it as a certificate, I could have read it to you, but we thought it was better to get some equipment that, with some federal dollars that is brought to us, and funnel it back to the community. So what we're presenting, the Owatonna Police Department, is a couple light bars for their, so they can continue their efforts, and typically, it's about, oh, $3,000 package that you get. So I just want to thank the sergeant here, and it just, for me, it's a blast to work with people that really believe in what they're doing and are committed, and you're very fortunate to have the chief and the sergeant here that stand behind it. So thank you very much. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
So, and thank you for your time.
As Chief Hiller said, that I'm the TZD coordinator for Steel County, and I've been proud to be on the Safe and Sober TZD group since 1998 in its inception here in Steel County. To take something else away from what Mr. McGonaghy said is this, is if you look at an average crash, when talking with the trauma doctor recently at a training, an average crash costs $2 million in medical diagnostic and rehabilitation. Us writing tickets, an average about $168 a ticket. Ask people, what would you rather we have, out there enforcing the laws with a $168 ticket, or a $2 million crash? And that's why we do what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those little pieces of paper are called invitations, so.
Oh, yeah, and by the way, hopefully you won't see this when you're.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move on to public hearings, and we got 1.6.1, continuation of public hearing for improvement of 13,001 to 12th Avenue Northwest. And with that, we'll move on to Kyle.
Good evening. This is a continuation of the hearing from last meeting. Just briefly, the estimated cost of the improvement to 12th Avenue from the frontage road to State Avenue is $1,182,964.25. What I would like to add to the record is that I did meet with the owners of Gracie's Cafe. They are concerned about our proposal to, currently, their parking is pretty open for the entire length of the property. We've suggested that for safety reasons and for compliance with our codes, several sections of the zoning code, that that should be reduced to three entrances. They are opposed to that proposal. Just want to make note of that. So, we did meet with them, we were not able to come to an agreement.
Okay, thank you. Just being a public hearing, it is open to public comment. If anyone would like to speak on this, please come forward, and we'll have you sign in so that we have this on record for whoever wishes to speak.
Do we need to open it, or?
It is open.
Oh, it is open.
That's a continuation.
Oh, okay, okay.
So if anyone would like to comment on this, again, this is just going out for bond, the bidding process, right? This is not the final?
This would be to.
Order the improvement.
Order the improvements.
Order the improvements and go for bidding.
Correct.
Okay.
No, you'll have another opportunity to accept the plans and authorize bids.
Okay, so we do have two steps to go through yet before.
Correct.
It actually happens, so. Anyone wishing to speak on this? See, and I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion by Raymond to close the public hearing? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion?
I've got one comment.
I'll wait till after we close the public hearings.
I'm sorry.
Then the council gets a comment.
I'm sorry, I thought you had. I'm sorry.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now you get a chance.
All right. I happened to be out in that area last week on business, and I was heading south towards Gracie's, and there was a vehicle coming north, and proceeded to go through the southbound lane and cut through their parking lot to go to the business adjacent, just north of theirs, and had curbs been in place, that wouldn't have happened. And I can, I can see now, from a safety standpoint, with the restaurant there, for the safety of the people that go to that restaurant, for the safety of other businesses in that area, I support putting a curb in that, in that.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Raymond.
Just, Kyle, just a question on Gracie's. Does that mean you would just have an opening, then they'd have an opening, and not a slanted curb cut to their parking lot? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, there'd be.
You'd have a curb cut, and then they actually would drive in their lot?
Yes, and that would allow for on-street parking as well, between the, obviously, between the entrances.
Not have on-street parking before.
Well, then.
Yes and no.
It's a bit haphazard.
Okay, any other comments? Chair, entertain a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we'll go on to the next one, which is a continuation again of LeMond Road, and we'll ask you to do a quick review. Kyle.
Good evening. Again, this is a continuation, as Councilor Abrams mentioned. This project would be from Selby Avenue to the I-35 Bridge, or just short of the I-35 Bridge, including a sidewalk consistent with the sidewalk and trail plan. The sidewalk would be on the northwest side of LeMond Road. The estimated cost is $1,867,162.11. And I'm available to answer any questions, and I.
Again, this is continuation, so the public hearing is open, and with that, if anyone wishes to speak, please come forward and I have you sign in.
Yes, I do have some letters that I would like to read into the record.
Okay, I'll, after we close the public hearing then, that's, okay. Anyone wish to speak on LeMond Road? With that, I'll, not seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Raymond to close it. Second to that?
Second.
Second by Brett. Brett Svenby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the meeting is closed, now we have public, or council comment, and with that, Chris, you have some.
Yes, I just want to read into the record and make note of the letters that I've received in relation to this project. We received two letters from Joel Reeds, objecting to the assessment amount and expressing concerns about the drainage impact. Council received copies of those letters, both of those letters. I received tonight a letter from Colin and Charlotte Rotman, expressing concerns about the amount of the assessment, concerns about some details of the project relating to the loss of trees on the front of their property, concern about if trees are lost, wanting replacements, concern about additional right-of-way needed to meet some engineering criteria, concerns about the estimate. Mr. Rotman's property is one that had a reduction based on non-buildable area. He's not certain that that was sufficient due to the, you know, the snow being there and not able to validate that. He also had some concerns relating to a drainage easement along the northern corner, and some encroachment by the city-owned storm sewer pipe, and also disagreed with the amount of the assessment, and felt it did not increase the value of his property. And then he had some questions about disability exemption and how that would work. I've also received a letter, or email, from Kurt and Deanne Lee, also objecting to the project. They disagree that their property would be improved by the amount of the assessment received. They have over 300 linear feet. They also expressed concern about the curb and gutter and sidewalk, feeling it's very excessive and would not be utilized, and asked that, you know, the park trail be used instead. And we will, council has received copies of the Rotman letter, and I will make sure everyone gets a copy of the letter from Kurt and Deanne Lee as well. And we have also received the Reeds letters, and all of these will be made part of the record in connection with this project.
Thank you, Chris. Raymond.
Chris, how many trees on Rotman's property will be left?
You know, do you know, Kyle, about how many trees would be affected?
We don't have the final design yet to know.
And that was part of Mr. Rotman's concern, because the design isn't finalized, you know, he's, he's saying that these are unknowns and could be possible impacts further down the road.
Yeah, I guess, Kyle, the question I've got is, until a design is set, hopefully, or you intend to answer all the questions with a design?
We'll try to.
Okay. Well, what you'll do is you'll address the concerns as best can be done with a design?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, so basically, what we need to do is approve a, to go ahead with the design, is our initial approval here tonight?
Correct, and, and to be honest, we have started, but we're not to the final design.
And to me, I think what we need to do is address all these concerns with the design to try to resolve those issues?
At least we have opportunities to do that. I mean, the bids come in, and.
If, you know, to me, if it doesn't meet their criteria or everything, we can still say no at that point.
Right, that's right.
But at least we would have a design set for it.
Right, we have some opportunities to do that, and trust me.
It will still come back to you to approve the design to authorize bids.
Okay, okay. So, any other questions from the council?
Motion, we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved to go on to the design, and it will be coming back to the council at that time, plus everyone that is impacted by this will have a chance to look at that design, to see how it does impact them, if it will. So, again, it's the process we really do need to go through to get to that point.
How will the notification come out, so we would know when that, like, is required?
When it comes to the council, again, the people should be notified that are impacted by this.
No, actually, the next notification you would receive would be with the assessment in the fall. Is that correct, I believe? Yeah.
The notification of the approval of the bids, or the specs and, and to go to bid, would be a resolution out of post council, on the agenda of the council meeting. There's nothing that's mailed to the property owners for assessment notification.
Certainly, right, certainly, we can communicate, you know, with your specific concerns relating to, you know, the design and the trees and all that, as we're going forward, we can certainly communicate with you about that.
I think, Chris, with this, because there are certain objections, we should make a point of notifying the residents along that street when the design is done, for them to look at it.
Okay.
I think that would be good, and our part to get them involved at that point, so.
So, so, once the design is done, they would be able to come up to the city offices and look at it?
Yes.
They're not, prior to a council meeting, is what you're, what you're suggesting?
Prior to a council meeting, yes. Yes, so does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. See, we didn't vote on this, did we? Okay, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been also approved. With that, now we'll move on to the next one, as a continuation of a public hearing again. It's an improvement on 13, or 21, oh, wait, this, 2013. Sidewalk projects.
Three off there, Les.
Not 21, oh, three, so. So with that, we'll go back to Kyle for a review.
Good evening. This would be the sidewalk from the I-35 Bridge to Park Drive along Bridge Street. I did speak with the owner's representative from the Fleet Farm property in person regarding this, and then the other location is 21st Avenue Northwest, which would be on the west side of McDonald's, between Hoffman Drive, Old 14, and the frontage road. I did attempt to contact the property owner a few times, but did not receive a call back. And they were notified of the hearings. We did not hold a public, or a neighborhood meeting for this project, because it only affected two property owners. The estimated cost is $112,308.75. The Bridge Street improvements were covered with state aid money. The 21st Avenue Northwest were not, so the proposal is to assess for the improvement on 21st Avenue Northwest.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is, a public hearing is open now. If anyone would like to make comments, please come forward. Again, seeing none, look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Greg to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, council comments on this. Any questions? Guess the question I've got is, what was the comment from Fleet Farm representative on the?
The obvious concern is that it increases their maintenance, because they have an additional sidewalk to plow. They don't expect that a lot of foot traffic will come to their business, but they weren't opposed to the sidewalk either. They just, you know, like all of the businesses along Bridge Street, the sidewalk will be right on the back of curb. They'll end up having to push, we'll push snow onto them, and they'll push snow back onto us when they clean the walks, and then we will end up having to pick that area up. So it will increase our maintenance a little bit there, so, but there, it's definitely an area that, there's pedestrians, and we need to get them up off the road, so.
Partly their gas stations receive more business, partly than the store, people walking by and stuff, and.
Well, just the nature of their business doesn't lend itself to walking in.
Again, you said you didn't get any comment from McDonald's?
No, I contacted corporate office on two occasions, and no one returned my call.
Okay. I guess we'd still like to pursue that a little bit, to let them know what's happening, so.
And they were notified of.
Is that a corporate store?
They had mailed notice.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that a corporate store now, or?
Yes, I had contacted someone in the metro.
I know he sold out, but is it a corporate store now, then?
Okay, okay, well, with that, chair, we'll look for a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved to proceed with the design phase also. Again, the next item here, we got is another public hearing, improvements on West School Street, Oak Avenue to Cedar Avenue, and give you an update on that, Kyle.
Good evening, and this is the section of School Street that has a failing storm sewer. We did a temporary repair last summer, late last summer, and feel that the storm sewer needs to be replaced. Unfortunately, the entire street will have to be removed in order to do that, so we're in replacing sanitary sewer and water main in conjunction with the storm sewer. They're, all of the utilities are at least 100 years old in that street. Because the street has not, it doesn't meet our 40-year requirement on the concrete streets, we are not proposing assessments for the street. The only assessments that we're proposing would be for the private sanitary sewer and water services to the homes. We did hold a neighborhood meeting last week on the 12th, and there were a couple of residents in attendance. We have been made aware, there is a daycare on the south side of School Street, two houses in from Oak. We, we're going to work our, the best we can with them. It is a difficult situation. We're trying to put in a very large storm sewer pipe in front of their home. The pipe itself is, on an outside dimension, is about 64 inches wide, so it's almost six feet. You add another foot for some working room or more. We've got an eight-to-nine-foot-wide trench that has to be dug through there to install this pipe, so there is going to be a lot of disruption. We are trying to come up with some solutions to that. We don't have any great optimum solutions yet, but if there's any other questions.
Okay. Again, with this being a public hearing, is open, it's a continuation, so if anyone would like to speak, please come forward and sign in.
This is a new one, isn't it?
No.
No, this is not a continuation.
A continuation yet?
This is a new one.
This is new.
This is new.
This is new?
Yes.
Okay, okay, well, again, I'll, I'll open up the public hearing at 7:30 for that, so if you wish to speak, please, please do. No, 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 no.
You're good. You're good. Okay. You're confusing me, Les. Okay. My name is Jolie Potine, and I reside at 131 West School Street.
Can you pull that mic closer to you?
There we go.
Can you not hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. What is the period, I do have a couple of questions here. So, what is the period of time that we could possibly have without water or sewer? Would there be a period of time where we would not have those things available to us?
There'd be brief times when you may be without water. We expect that they'd be able to maintain the sewer service. There will be some times when they're cutting in, you know, roughly eight hours would be the maximum that you'd be without water.
And would we be notified, the residents within that area?
Yes.
Be notified of that?
And we do have a temporary water as a bid item, so if they're going to be taking out for an extended period of time, they would have to get a temporary water supply to your home.
I see, okay. And given the extent of this project, listening to you talk about how large the pipe is, and the extent of the digging, you know. the extent of the digging, you know, is that going to change the size of the road and our boulevard? Are the dimensions of the road itself going to change? Is our boulevard going to become smaller in front of our homes?
The, the road will look the same as it does now, except it'll be new. We will be replacing it essentially as is for width and grade.
And so, is there going to be all-new gutters and side, are the sidewalks going to be torn up, or?
The sidewalks will be replaced as needed. The driveways, the curb and gutter, and the street surface will be replaced.
Okay. So then, the driveways themselves, will the dimensions of the driveway entrance be the same, or would we have the option of possibly widening the entrance?
They will contact you if you want to widen the driveway. You would be responsible for the increased size. So if it's 10 feet wide now and you want 15 feet, you'd pay for the five additional feet.
Correct. Okay.
But you could do that at that time zone.
Yep. So, that was, that was another question of mine. Will they approach each of us, homeowners individually, for specific bids that we may want to have? For instance, the driveway, another item that we may want to have replaced is, and inspected, is the pipe, the pipes inside of our homes, the plumbing that goes out to the street, so that they can tell, you know, this needs to be replaced, this is no longer, you know?
We can't come onto private property, so, you know, as far as our work, we'll be staying within the street right away. But as far as the driveway, they do have a form that they try to get out to everybody, but as, as the project progresses, Dan Perkel, the associate engineer running the job, will be out there, and don't be afraid to grab him and say, you know, when this goes back in, this is what we'd like to see.
Okay. All right. So I'm, since the street will be all dug up, that would be the time to do all of those kinds of things? And, which would be, I'm assuming, at the owner's expense for that pipe to be replaced?
Correct.
Okay. Within those pipes, I do not know the correct terminology for this, but there's a valve, I believe, where the water goes out one way, but it cannot come in.
Check valve.
The check valves? Is that what that is? Okay. So would that be the owner's expense as well, to have something like that installed?
Yes.
Okay. So that's not part of the city's expense?
Again, from the property line into the home, that would be owner's expense.
Okay. All right. And is there, you already answered my question, I guess, with the water. If there was any, will the water be tested periodically to make sure that the water coming into our homes is safe throughout this project?
Yes.
Yes.
Or they'll tell you that, you know, if it's not safe to, you know, drink bottled water. But I expect that they'll be able to keep the existing main in service as they put the new one in.
Okay. And just as our neighbors, the Greens, who have daycare, we have concerns with the period of time that we would not actually have access to our homes with the street being dug up. And do you have any idea on the period of time that would be?
Without knowing the contractor, we, and how they intend to do the job, we don't. We can try and limit it, and, but it's going to be a mess, and, you know, it always rains at the worst time, but we try to maintain access when we can.
Right. I mean, we do have a couple elderly people on our street, so if there was any medical emergencies, or if there was a fire, or, you know, things of that nature, I would be concerned as far as being able to get to them in a timely manner?
At the end of the workday, we expect them to button up their, their work and not leave a large, open hole, and most contractors won't. It's just an attraction for, diversion for people to want to look, so they, they try to button everything up at the end of the day and get people access to their homes. But we work with the fire department and the police to let them know what's going on.
Right. But, so you're looking into other options for us as residents to be able to come, you know, be able to get?
We're trying. There's not a lot of good solutions, apparent good solutions, so.
And from what I understand, there's going to be a period of time where Oak Street is going to be blocked off, and Cedar is going to be blocked off because of the construction zone, and they're not going to be blocked off at the same time?
No.
Okay.
It shouldn't be.
Oak won't totally be blocked off, though.
Well, we've got to go into Oak to get the water. The storm sewer and the sanitary have been stubbed out, but we will be closing one lane, one northbound lane of Oak.
Are, are you the person who's got daycare?
No, I'm not.
I've just been thinking of the thought on daycare, with the two homes from the Cedar side, that daycare, wherever it is, I was just thinking, maybe I could talk to a couple of neighbors and drive across the yard and unload the kids and go back across and load sod to replace with, or something, but that's up to you to make that decision.
Well, there is actually, there, there's a possible access from Oak Street. There is a house that, it, I believe it's either a duplex or a triplex, and, and there is a parking lot, and we could access our homes through the vacant lot, through there, if, if the city would be willing to maybe put some gravel down or something like that, because that could see it getting muddy, you know, from people driving on it, but, you know, it's a possibility for, you know, a short-term solution, if people would be accepting of us driving on their property for a period of time.
We can contact them and see if it's a possibility.
Okay.
Nate, you had a question?
I was just going to say that the daycare is also here. They wanted to speak, that they're on Oak Street on that side.
Okay.
That was everything I had. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Sorry, hi, Mark. Sorry I was late, I didn't catch the meeting last weekend, so I might not be up to date. One of the questions, or two questions I just have. Last year, when, on the other side of Oak Street, when West School Street was done in there, so now, will our street between Cedar now and Oak will be brought up to code for that one, right? Am I correct there? It'll be exactly the same as what was done on the other side of Oak?
Correct. We'll be doing quite a bit more work.
Right, right. I agree. Now, we have had a tendency to have sewer backup along this street. As you might know, we have to get water pumps in there when we get the heavy rains. My question is, that was brought to my attention, is, has anything been done on Walnut going towards OPU? Are we going to go from big to existing, which may be smaller?
The, the storm pipe that we're proposing to put back in is the same size. We're somewhat limited because of the size of the pipe and the amount of cover that we have, so we really can't upsize it. Are you, when you, when you're talking about backups, are you talking about sewer backups?
Sewage, yeah. And a lot of us in the city.
Are you on the south side?
I live on the north side. I've got a little bit of elevation over my neighbor's two houses down. They get three, four inches and they've got it right away. I've been very fortunate, except for the big flood that we had in the fall of 210, and I was right there by my floor drain, so I was able to get it right away, so I didn't have a problem, but I have about two feet compared to my neighbor's two feet down.
I don't have the pictures with me tonight, but the sanitary sewer has roots in it. We've been in there and tried to cut the roots out and haven't been successful, so we're not getting complete flow from the sanitary sewer. We've also identified some cross connections between the storm sewer and the sanitary that's surcharging that line.
Okay.
We believe that once we remove those, we'll improve the situation. So, we'll improve the flow in the sanitary sewer, and we'll reduce the amount of flow into it. It won't be perfect, but it'll be better.
Okay. That's good news, but you didn't answer my question. How about Walnut now? Are we going to go from bigger to smaller? Because then if that's the case, then there's no way that we're going to get a flow going down there that way, from big to small, without a backup. Does that make sense?
We don't have any current plans on Walnut.
I know. I know, but I'm, what I'm saying is, is that smaller?
I don't believe, not at Walnut.
Then they think that's going to go, be going in.
Oh, no, we're replacing the sanitary sewer the same size, 12 inches that's there, so we won't be increasing the sewer size.
Okay. All right.
There is a bottleneck further down that line that we are looking to address, but it is quite a ways down from, from where you're at.
All right.
It's down near the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Very good. Then, one other question. Here a few years ago, when they run this cable along from, I believe it was out by Charter, whatever, all the way on down School Street, past there, and I don't remember anymore the company was out of that, did this. Okay. Now, I lost part, and it's going to be replaced, part of my approach for my driveway, they cracked it, of course, but then, I end up, and it's pretty hard to explain when you've got three feet of snow on, on your lawn now, but are they going to put sod in instead of weed seed in the dirt?
Yes. It's planned for sod.
Okay, that's what, you know, I got the worst yard now because of that weed seed just, just spread, so, and it's pretty hard, and it's, it's a, really a minor thing, but I was just, just one of the things that I wanted to know, so.
Okay. No, it's planned for sod.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Margaret Green, and I am the lady that has the daycare here. And we did discuss last week about the concerns that I have over the access to, for my parents to be getting in and out of our home, like, throughout the day. And I'm talking about, right now, it's 20 times a day that I had counted up, and through the summer, it will be 16, so it's just as many, if you will. So, and I'm also concerned now, too, about, like, if and case, this is not, an access is not available for any ambulance or a police department to come in for the children or an emergency, not, I mean, for us as well as the rest of the residents on the south side of the street. So I just really wanted to stress my concern over having an access made available for us, and, so, that's what I have to say.
I think 911 will go right down the sidewalk, if that's what it, need to be an emergency, they'll go right down the sidewalk.
Maybe Mike can address it.
Yeah, we deal with this all the time, and we're going to be able to access that site, and if we have to bring in some extra people, we can go through and do that. And even in these areas, there's many areas we serve for fire protection that there is no water supply, so we deal with this routinely, so I don't anticipate any problems as far as emergency medical services or fire protection.
Okay. And then, Kyle, I was going to ask you to, when you're talking about short periods of time that the water will be shut off, like, how much time, are we talking hours, or in a day?
We won't know until we have a contractor on board and we can get their ideas of how they want to progress with the work.
Okay.
We can put in our specifications, you know, that you can't be without water for, you know, any more than a few hours or eight hours. But also in looking at the water system there, there's a significant number of water mains in Cedar Avenue. It's kind of a spaghetti web of water main that we're trying to work on there, so it's going to be a little bit more complicated than normal, unfortunately. That's why we're paying for the temporary water, so that, you know, we can keep
Sure.
service to the homes. So, that's a bid item that allows us to, you know, we, we pay the contractor to do it, so we can expect a little higher level of service.
So will we have an idea then, too, as to when the water will be shut off?
They should be giving you notice, you know, unless, you know, unplanned events, of course, but, you know, we won't allow them to tear into the water main at 3 o'clock on a Friday and then leave for the weekend.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, else wish to speak?
I'm Jonathan Trow, 128 West School Street. I apologize, I've, maybe you've given this information, but I missed it, I'm not sure, but do you have dates set for the beginning of this project and how long it might take?
We don't, I'm estimating, because it's a concrete street, you know, we're going to have at least seven days of cure time after it goes back on, I'm going to guess two months of construction.
Okay. Do you have a date when you might begin the project?
We don't. We haven't, we haven't finished the plans, and we don't have a contractor on board. I'm looking at a tentative completion date of September 20th, depending on when, when we can get the bids out. I know that there is a lot of school traffic that comes down School Street, so ideally we'd be done before that. I don't know if that's possible or not.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else wish to speak?
Seeing none, will I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Raymond to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, council comment.
I just got a couple of things. Number one, that, that sanitary sewer line that did have some tree roots in it that would impede the flow, that could, some of those backups that you were having?
Definitely.
The other thing is, it would be a good time to remind homeowners to consider putting in a check valve in that sanitary sewer. We had that issue down on Maple Drive as well. It's not a, it's not an insignificant cost, but considering the alternative, if you do have frequent sewer backups, it's much less of a problem, or makes it a little bit better.
That was another thing I forgot to say about the check valve. That's why I was trying to stress the fact of, boom. Okay. If it's not going to be able to handle whatever like this, then why is it, or my question is, why should the homeowners, who should be totally responsible for this check valve that you're talking about, that the city should be somewhat responsible for not following through with the whole plan?
Well, and Chris can speak. We, we used to have a program.
Yeah, I, I'm going to need to review that. I think that was tied to the flood, you know, to the flood and, and certain parameters, but we can certainly explore that again.
And, and just, just the removal of the tree roots through the, impeding the flow may alleviate that problem as well, and the cross connections, I think, is even a bigger problem.
Okay. Any other council comments?
Just one thing on the check valves. They do require maintenance. They're not maintenance-free. You know, you'd hate to see one lock in the down position. I don't know if that's possible or not, but, you know, it's, once a year type, you've got to check them.
To clean out, check. That's true.
One, one comment that I'd like to make, Kyle, is that with, something with this strategic timing and complexity, is there any way we can kind of put a limit, time limit on starting, stopping, finishing?
We will.
Okay.
And, you know, I've looked at specifically the Cedar Avenue intersection, that, you know, once they open that up, they're going to have a limited number of days to put it back together.
Okay.
But, you know, we have to be careful that we give them enough time.
Right, right.
Also.
So, again, we're going to kind of stress a time limit so that it gets done in, you know, without them going and working on other projects? So we will, we will be looking at a time limit so it gets done as quickly as possible? Any other council comments? Chair, will entertain a motion?
I think a motion we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Nate to approve, do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved for the design part only. Again, we will be going through the bidding process and the rest of it at the end of this fall sometime, so. With that, we have completed all of our public hearings, and we will move on to the financial report, and I'll give a quick recap of our finances for this week. It's $37,369 for Morton Building Incorporated for the LEC detached storage, $33,435 for SHI Corp, Microsoft Annual License and Other Miscellaneous Items, $122,076 for Southeast Service Cooperative, monthly health insurance premium, $25,605 for Yocum Oil for fuel purchases, and $201,307 for other expenditures, for a total of $419,794 for your approval tonight.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin to pay the bills, do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. We will now move on to the consent agenda items, and we did pull two of them from that. These are minutes of meetings, license permits, department reports and other miscellaneous items, all grouped into one motion to kind of expedite us. So with that, council, chair will look for a motion by, we have a motion by Raymond to approve the consent agenda items, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. We now move on to action items 3.2.1, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, and with that, we will go to Rhonda.
Each year when the city renews the property and liability insurance with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, it must decide whether or not to waive the statutory tort liability limits to the extent of the coverage purchased. You've received all the background information on this. It is in the best interest of the city not to waive the statutory tort liability limits, and so staff is recommending that the council approve, the recommendation not to waive the monetary limits.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any questions from the council?
Some will be approved.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve not to waive the monetary limits, do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. Next item is 3.2.2, Fire Department Rescue Boat, and we've got Mike here.
Yep, Mr. Chair, members of the council, you should have received a purpose memo and an email from me with more information about a purchase of a rescue boat for the fire department. This is a request for council approval for the purchase of a rescue device. Originally, when I talked to the council during our council planning session, we were looking at a rescue boat. After more research, we determined that it would be better for us to get a rapid deployment craft instead of a rescue boat that's there. There's a couple of things that I was directed to do when we talked about this during our council session, and that was to look at an option of a used boat. At that time, we're looking at a Zodiac rescue boat with lines for safety for firefighters. I did look into that, and I found that most of those boats that were available, they were being sold because of the age, and the glue has a limited lifespan that's there, and they're no longer warranted, and that's why fire departments were selling those boats. But we did send one of our fire commanders to an ice rescue course, Commander Thomas, and he came back with a recommendation for this rapid deployment craft, and we found out that this is a cheaper alternative, and it's also more effective for our fire department as far as rescue. Doesn't require a trailer like a boat does, and we could store it in a bag and actually store it on one of our trucks and move it around a lot easier. So this request is for a rapid deployment craft that could be used for ice rescue, it can be used for water rescue. The original budget amount that we had was $17,000 for this item. We went through and got a quotation from Atlas Outfitters, and that was for $8,674. Now, that would be for the rapid deployment craft. In addition to that, there's some additional equipment because it's a different type of rescue. You need an ice rescue suit, you need some ropes, and you're lower into the water, you're not actually sitting in a boat, you're on an inflatable with open ends that we use for rescues. So the total price for this would be $9,366.53, and that includes shipping and tax. We think this is a necessary item for the safety of our firefighters when we're performing ice rescue, in addition to that for water rescue. So staff recommendation is to go through and authorize the purchase of the rapid deployment craft.
Thank you, Mike, any, Nate?
So what is the warranty and the expected life of the craft?
That's a good question, I can get that information back to you. You know, I didn't look up that information.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to?
I guess the question I've got is, in watching the videos, looking at, this is more of an ice rescue than a water rescue, in my opinion. If there's, if there's a water rescue necessary, middle of Lake Colmar, this really isn't going to get you out there sufficiently enough to, for a water rescue, would it?
Yeah, it would. In the quotation that we have, which I sent out an email to all council members, one of the items on that quotation is for a motor mount that's there, but in water rescues, like in a lake like that or a river, it's preferred not to use a outboard motor with a prop because it can actually cause injury to the victim. Many times they're just below the surface of the water. Where we may use that is to get close to that area where they were last seen, and then shut it off, and then actually paddle, or, you know, there's different options that are there. But this device, we could pull it across the ice, we can, if we have swift water rescue like we did with the floods, we could actually use zip lines and drag it back and forth and maneuver it into water. There's a lot of different options on how we could use this device.
I was very impressed with the ice-water rescue. It was neat to see it in action, if you will.
Hopefully we'll never need it, but it's good to have the safe equipment to use if we're going to do those rescues.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve 3.2.2.
Dave Burbank to approve this request, do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Spenvy, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Good luck with it, and I think it's a very unique piece of equipment to be able to use for something like that, so, thank you. With that, we will move on to Resolutions 32-13, Authorization for Master Contract with MINDOT, and we'll go to Kyle.
This is a master contract, a five-year contract with MINDOT for services that they, we contract with them. Examples would be bridge inspection, we don't do that ourselves, we hire them to do that. And then also, another example would be some material testing items that we run through them. So recommend approval of master contract with MINDOT.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Raymond?
I read through all the 12 pages trying to find how much does that cost us? I didn't find it.
At the current rate, I think.
What does that mean?
Generally, they have a
How much an hour, or does that?
Depending on the service, they have different rates.
How much an hour then?
Yep, or per test that they run, and they have the right, you know, we don't have to use them, this is just an overall agreement that, so we can. We do, we have found them to be a lot more reasonable than either training our own staff or, and certainly in the case of bridge inspections, they're much more reasonable.
But wouldn't they give us a cost upfront so we could budget for that, or?
Yes.
I mean, what kind of, I mean, do we estimate some cost of that at all, you know, there's about 12 pages to the
Right, I could get you that.
See what kind of cost we're talking, I guess.
I did see the bill, and I don't remember the numbers, but the bridge inspections was, I was surprised how low the cost was.
I understand, it just would be nice to know.
Yep.
It's $20 an hour, or $40 an hour, or whatever, or what, how they bill it out, I guess.
I can get that for you.
Sub move we approve.
We have a motion to approve by Raymond, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved, and good luck with it. The next item is 3.4.2, Resolution 3313, Approve Specs and Order Bids for Improvement Project at East Broadway Street. Kyle?
This is a resolution requesting authorization to proceed with advertisement for bids for East Broadway. At the February 19th meeting, you approved the feasibility report and authorized preparation of plans and specifications, which we've done. We're now looking to take this project to bids.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
We'll go with Kevin this one. Second by Kevin, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved to proceed, and we will move on to Resolution 34-13, Submit Business Development Infrastructure Application for Viricon. And with that, we'll call on Troy.
As you know, Viricon is planning a 100,000 square foot addition on their facility in Industrial Park. Tax increment financing has been approved for the expansion to help with the utility relocation, construction of a storm pond, and other site work. In our discussions with the state, there is a grant opportunity, it's called a Business Development Infrastructure Grant, and that would help fund half of the costs of any public infrastructure costs that are needed for business expansion. The grant would cover up to one-half of the cost for the public infrastructure, up to 1.4 million, so we are, would like to apply for that. We also have the tax increment financing that would cover the other half of those public infrastructure costs. All current property taxes will continue to be paid on the property. The city is incurring some consulting expenses relative to the tax increment financing district and drafting the development agreement, and those costs will be paid out by the EDA consulting budget and reimbursement. So the public infrastructure, you know, we're estimating to be a maximum of 2.8 million, of which we want to apply for a grant for 1.4, the other 1.4 or up to 1.4 would come from tax increment financing. So there's no out-of-pocket expenses from the general fund relative to this project, and so we need, would recommend adoption of the resolution authorizing submission of the Business Development Infrastructure Grant on behalf of Viricon and their expansion project.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Chair, entertain a motion?
Approved.
We have a motion by Greg to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved, thank you. And with that, we will move on to 3.4.4, Resolution 3513, Authorize and Document Interfund Loan for TIFF District Number 3-6. Again, Troy.
Okay, this is a resolution allowing for interfund loan if need be. This was at the advice of our legal consultants on this for the Viricon project. Again, 2.8 million dollars in public infrastructure costs, of which 1.4 we're applying for a grant, and 1.4 from tax increment financing. There may be, because of the timing of this project, it may work out that we have to pay some of these expenses before the grant is approved or taxing, or we can get reimbursed for tax increment financing. So according to our legal counsel, in meeting the requirements of the state auditor's office is, we would need a resolution, and all the terminology that's needed for that is in the resolution, mainly for auditing purposes, to have the approval needed to be able to pay those expenses upfront and then be reimbursed later on, once we have those approvals and those monies available. So staff would recommend approval of the resolution, approving the terms up to 2.8 million dollars for interfund loan in connection with tax increment finance, tax increment financing district 3-6, and that's for the Viricon project.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Nate?
There are no concerns with the grant approval not going through as anticipated.
The state was involved with us in negotiating with Viricon, that was money that they put upfront in the proposal, later after the proposal, that was an amount in a grant that they were willing to fund to help bring Viricon to do that expansion here.
Brent?
Troy, the resolution talks about some annual rate of some percentage, do you know what that is?
Yep, so we have the, we set the interest rate at 4%, and that's the maximum amount allowed by law.
Any other questions from the council? Chair, entertain a motion?
Sub move we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve this, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This Resolution 3513 has been approved, and I understand that 3.5 or 36.13 and 37.13 have been pulled for this, so we will move on to ordinances, and we have a first reading of proposed ordinance 4-13, Police Civil Service Commission, and with that, we'll go to Keith.
Thank you, sir. What you have in front of you tonight is a request in the first reading of ordinance number 223 to abolish the Police Civil Service Commission, and it does require a unanimous vote by the council at the subsequent council meetings, at the second reading. I think sometimes when you look at abolishing a police civil service, you think there's something wrong with the civil service commission, absolutely not. Our civil service commission members are, matter of fact, fantastic, and if you review the minutes, are in complete support of it. I think as time has passed with federal and state employment laws, the Police Officer Bill of Rights, collective bargaining agreements, city policies and procedures, our new HR department, and other policies and procedures such as nepotism, the things that we worried about, you know, many, many years ago, for the reasons of putting the Police Civil Service Commission in place are really pretty antiquated now and really are not necessary. So with that, we would ask that we amend the ordinance to abolish the Police Civil Service Commission. However, that does not mean that we will not have community panels, even when it's not required. For example, the most recent police captain position, we went through the Civil Service Commission, we still had a 15-minute presentation and interview with a community panel, and we would still continue to do that in our interview processes because it's a way to be transparent, and it's also a very important way to engage our community members and leaders.
Thank you. Raymond?
Keith, just got a couple of questions, is other towns abolishing the Civil Service Commission?
The trend for abolishing police civil service commissions is pretty abundant throughout the state of Minnesota. In fact, municipalities with a population of 20,000 or more, there's only about 2% remaining police civil service commissions in the state of Minnesota.
Could you send to us the three reasons why to do it and the three reasons not to do it before the next hearing?
To
The three reasons to do it and the three reasons not to do it before the next hearing?
I think the three reasons to do it is to have an efficient
Can you just write them down for us and send it to us?
Oh, absolutely.
Three, three why to do it, three why not to do it. Will that improve, you know, will that improve, you know, just before the next hearing, we got to have two readings of it.
I will do, sir.
Kevin, did a question? Okay? I thought you raised your hand.
I just looked confused.
Anyone else?
Sub move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Raymond, and a second by Nate, any further discussion? This being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Spenvy?
Aye.
Trillson?
Aye.
Dodson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
And Abraham?
Aye.
Police?
With this being passed, we will look for that, and it will be on our next council meeting for the second reading.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to public comments, and if anyone wishes to speak? And with that, we move on to public comments, and if anyone wishes to speak, now please come here to the microphone and sign in. Ask you to remove your hat, please. Thank you.
My wife and I are owners of Flooring Frenzy in Oatana here. Back in September, the city of Oatana owned the theater building that got tore down. And we're still six months into it, waiting for the city of Oatana to show up and say, hey, we did some damage to your building. Wondering why we haven't had any comment from anybody on that yet.
Okay. Chris, can you answer that?
Certainly. We did contract with a contractor to demolish that, and that was part of, the contract was to have adequate insurance and all of that. And I know our League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust has been notified of your claim, and have assigned a claims adjuster as the contractor with his insurance has also. I don't know, Troy, did I miss anything? Do you have anything to add?
I think we've had a number of our staff down there to assist in the insurance adjusters and the engineers that have been down there. I know that there's been some discussion on what should be covered in that, and we were kind of leaving it up to the insurance companies to figure out, you know, what's, who's responsible for what, but, you know, any assistance we can help that process along, I think we're more than willing to do that.
Well, so far, so far, there's been zero assistance.
Okay.
Because I called the city building inspections, and nobody talked to me. I called for the meeting for the insureds to do a walkthrough. Your insurance said that she'd get back with me, and she hasn't. And I'm the innocent bystander.
I think, Chris, that we do need to follow up.
You can check with our insurance company and make sure that they contact you.
Yeah. They need to have their own engineer come down, or if they want my engineer report.
We'll follow up with that and see where that's at.
Because I feel, six months into it, it's way too far.
I think we should have some.
No addressing what's going on.
Is it reasonable to expect by the end of the week, someone can contact him and?
Oh, I would think so.
Give him an update?
Yep.
The next couple of days?
At least a phone call, at least a phone call.
Yeah. Which should have happened a long time ago.
Okay, we'll have them follow up with it and get back to you this week yet.
I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, you don't think he's doing anything?
With that, we'll move on to council comment, and we'll start with Dave.
Nothing from Ward 3.
And I'm going to go to Kevin. I forgot him last time, so.
Nothing from Ward 4.
I remember, there's still nothing, right? Brent?
Nothing from Ward 5.
Raymond?
I'd like to request staff, since we lost our second signal light in town by accident, I'd like to see our staff check all our stoplights. This is the second one now in town we've lost because of an accident. I'd like to see all our signal lights checked and put some protection in. The question I got is how long will this one be out of service? So we need to, you know, but this is the second one, within six months it's been destroyed. So I'd like to see all the signal lights checked in town, put some protection, so.
I know that last one, we were waiting for parts, which took.
Yeah, no, I understand, but now we got four-way stop at this one, and.
Yep, we'll do that.
I think we need to protect all our signal lights in town, so.
Anything else? Nate?
I would like to propose a resolution that, or a no-confidence vote in Punxsutawney Phil. It's still winter, it should not be. That's it.
You're blaming him for all the snow, right?
Yes.
Okay. Greg?
I can't top that all. Everything's quiet in Ward 2.
Mr. Mayor?
A couple of things. I had the privilege of being out in Washington, DC this past week, and attended the National League of Cities Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. Some of the issues that were there is sales tax issues. When we collect sales tax, do we do it at the point of sending, or is it the point of delivery? So most of the people felt that it should be at the point of delivery that is able to collect sales tax. Immigration reform, everybody we talked to feels that that's probably the only thing the two parties can agree upon because of the lack of support from the immigration on the Republican Party, so that the Republican Party will be more receptive to try and move immigration reform along. There was some talk about several of the cities that 1099s on subcontractors weren't getting submitted, so there was some concerns about that. HRA, the housing, there had some concerns about that. Let's move cities, towns, and countries along. There's some policies going on that have made it more receptive to having a community that is proactive in exercises and weight reduction. Made in America Manufacturing Act is Senate 63 and HR 375 would provide some funding to new businesses getting started up. They hope to be able to get that passed by both parties. And I also mentioned the new market tax credit funding that Viricon is trying to request now, that they fund that. Also, on Monday, had the Public Policies Committee Council. There's 46 members on that from all over the United States. Taxes and bonds were the highest issue of discussion on that, and there was some discussion about taxes and bonds being reduced by 28%. And there was a project in Iowa that if we added 28% onto those taxes and bonds, the project in Iowa would cost them an extra $2 million, which goes right down to the rate payer again. And if it was abolished altogether, it would add $7 million to the project. Also, EPA regulations and timelines were there. On Tuesday, we met with the Department of Treasury and the Majority Leader, Harry Reid, and Tim Walz, and talked about taxes and financing. And on Wednesday, we also met with Senator Franken, Colin Peterson, and Rick Nolan. It was interesting to have Rick Nolan's comment. He talked for about 15 minutes on how things have changed in 30 years. Back when he was there, they worked 40 to 50 hours a week, and they had all the committee hearings and everything took place, and now they work for a day and a half, and the committee hearings are right in front of you, before you even have a chance to discuss them. John Klein's representative was there, Michelle Bachmann's representative was there, Amy Comishar appeared, and Tim Walz appeared. So I think it was a worthwhile and productive time out in Washington, DC. The other thing we've got going on is Cardinal Stritch, the university, is going to partnership up with Rivlin Community College. Right now, we don't have a four-year degree entity at Rivlin Community College, and Cardinal Stritch is going to provide that. So we are having a meeting tomorrow to try and encourage companies to support that process. They're looking for about 20 to 25 students to enroll, and would offer the classes starting in August of this year. They need 50 credits in order, so they need a two-year degree in order to get that four-year degree while they're going to the college.
Tom, is that going to be a nursing degree?
That will be a general degree, I believe.
Business management.
Business management. So we've contacted Wastika and Faribault and Oberly. It's not just Oatana that will benefit by that, it's all the companies that are in Steel County area that would benefit by that, give their employees an opportunity to get that four-year degree.
Thank you. Chris, you have any?
Oh, nothing.
Thank you. Well, I've got nothing neither, and with that, Chair will look for a motion to adjourn.
You're actually looking, going to go to closed session.
Well, yeah, we'll adjourn into a closed session, right? All those in favor? Well, we need a motion, right?
Some move.
Second? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Need to adjourn.
So it's good to remark, make this face.